Unfortunately, I have a cough and when I talk, I cough more. So Leslie will be taking over today, please. Thank you.
And Bill, are you on the line? All right. Welcome, everybody, to our business meeting. It is May 17th, 2:00 PM. If you have not voted today, today is voting day. And I'm calling this meeting to order, attending our Commissioners Philios and Duncan. And we're going to have our 32nd moment of silence. And now, we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Under Sheriff Nelson, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first order of business is an award presentation, the Idaho Association of County Scholarship Award. And who will be making the presentation? I guess just you? I guess us?
We can do it.
Okay. Hannah Griffin, are you here?
Could you come forward, please?
I don't have it. Do you have a piece of paper or anything? Okay. Well, we know you got the award. We don't have anything to hand you, but we do want to say congratulations. And can you tell us what future plans you'll use the award for?
Of course. I'm a bioconstru major and I hope to use the award.
Yeah, sorry. Can you speak into that microphone?
There you go.
Turn on the little loudspeaker.
There you go.
Thank you.
I am a biochem major and my desire is to go to medical school. So currently, I'm attending North Idaho College. I wish to transfer to the University of Idaho and I will be using the scholarship for my tuition this year. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. And how much is the scholarship?
It's for $1,000.
Wonderful. And awarded due to?
Due to being the child of a county employee. And that's my father.
Wonderful. And who's your dad?
My father is Josh Griffin. He's a county public defender.
Congratulations. You're a proud dad.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations to you. And we're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
And we need more doctors.
Yeah, we do.
So you need to come back here to practice. Thank you so much.
I hope to do so. Thank you.
Okay, Bill's on.
All right. We are at changes to the agenda. And hearing none?
None.
Okay. We'll go on to approve the meeting minutes.
I can take it.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that with regard to item F, to approve the minutes, items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 through 11.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
That's fine. Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. And the consent calendar.
So I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, items 12, 13, and 14.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. And the payables list?
The payables list for the week of May 9th through the 13th totals $1,240,725.77. No jury panel points.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. Our first item of business, item number 16, is bid award 030522 for the Riverstone Transit Center Phase II construction. Kim?
Yes, Kim Riley. For the record, we had an invitation for bids for the construction on the Riverstone Transit Center. And after reviewing all three, we determined that Idaho State Construction was the lowest responsive bidder with a total of $1,302,600.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Bill, did you want to make the motion? Or is it easier if I do it?
Sure. I move that we accept the award, the bid, bid number 030522 for the Riverstone Transit Center Phase II construction to Idaho State's construction in the amount of $1,302,600.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
And next, item 17, Board Approval Request. So this is the Cootney County Public Transportation FY22 Transportation Improvement Program, which is known as TIP, amendment number 12. Kim, again?
Yes. The bid for this construction project, as we're hearing throughout the area, came in higher than anticipated. So we are asking to have an administrative amendment, which was, is before you, from KMPO, which moves funding from capital equipment that we had set aside in our FY22 Transportation Improvement Program and moving it into a different key number, which is specifically for the construction on Phase II.
All right.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the request for Cootney County Public Transportation Fiscal Year 22, TIP, which is a Transportation Improvement Program Amendment Number 12.
Second.
I second the motion.
She beat you, Bill. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
Number 18, Grant Amendment 3-16-0010-050-2020, Amendment Number 1 to Partial Airport Perimeter Fence. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen, here for the record. This is a grant amendment to our partial perimeter fence. It's a little different than the grant amount, that that was 100% grant amount. This is in 90% of the outstanding amount, so that we have a little bit, we'll have to cover of the $61,000 that's outstanding in the account. But this is for, is an automated gate that was needed to be installed to secure the fence line.
Okay. And I think that our amount is, I think, around $6,000. It's not too much. My only other question is, it says no match requirement, but there is one on the agenda, so I don't know if that is a problem. Item 18.
I don't think that's...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's a defect.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, Bill? Bill, you want to make the motion? All right, I'll do it. I move that we approve grant amendment number 3-16-0010-050-2020, Amendment Number 1 to the Partial Airport Perimeter Fence for the FAA. At the, the grant award, obviously, is $55,506. No match requirement.
Second. Bill Brooks? Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. Now we have item 19, Airport Work Order Number 22-001, Exhibit A, Scope of Work for the Snow Removal Equipment Building Design Bidding and Construction Services, TO Engineers. Stephen?
Commissioners, this is a contract in the amount of $94,361.89. As it was stated, this is broken into three parts. The first part is a redesign because we are reducing significant amounts of this building as well as reusing previous items from this, and that amount is in $22,861.99. And then also, the rebid amount, which is $10,417.32. Both these items are time and material, so that if we do not, either maximum expenses for those two. And then also, the construction observation is in the amount of $61,082.58. The first two items are non-AIP eligible, while the third item is AIP eligible, which is, we want that included, will be included with the grant.
Okay. So the $22,000 is just our match portion of it?
It'll be part of our match portion, yes.
Okay. Of the overall project.
And the total work order is the $94,000?
Yes.
Okay. Right. So the time and material, is that actual construction that we're looking at? No?
No. If they, for example, the bidding was the most amount that they would anticipate, for example, if we remove items such as a bidding, a pre-bid meeting, which we are actually doing, that cost won't be as high. So it was, we were trying to get this scope under in place as quickly as possible while we were in the middle of discussing everything in the process, just to meet the FAA's deadlines.
Okay, fine. Bill?
Nope. You go ahead.
Okay. So for item number 19, is it 19? Yeah. Okay. We're approving the airport work order, 22-001, Exhibit A, Scope of Work for the Snow Removal Building Design Bidding and Construction Services with TO Engineers at the airport.
Second.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you, Stephen.
All right. Number 20, Grant Award 20CESKCS2022, which is the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program from Idaho State Police, $71,094. No match requirement. And this is the Sheriff and Sergeant Case.
Chris Case, for the record. The Sheriff's Office is seeking the approval of the Board to accept the grant as awarded at $71,094, and there is no match for that grant.
What is it going to be used for?
It is going to be used for personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies and prisoner health care for the detention facility.
Bill, you want to take this one?
Sure. I move that we approve a grant award number 20CESKCS-2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding CESF program for Idaho State Police in the amount of $71,094. No match required.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. And item 21, Board Approval Request for 30 patrol cars. And Sheriff, will you be speaking to this?
Yes, Robert Norris. This item was continued from last week, and this is the item where we were notified by a local car dealership that there was an opportunity to purchase or negotiate a number of cars that another law enforcement agency had to go to another company to get them. So we're just coming back after that week. I know that in the previous week discussions, there was some discussions about X amount of dollars for cars, X amount of dollars for wages and salary. And quite honestly, really, one has nothing to do with the other. We just brought this as a, we believe, a fiduciary responsibility to say, hey, this is what we were presented with. These cars, whether you consider buying 15, 20 of them, don't need to be paid for until the next budget cycle, so... But really, one has nothing to do with the other, and we do need to have a discussion on the other sooner rather than later. As you recall, we, I brought some issues with, to the Board regarding dispatch.
Right. And we can't, we can't get off topic here, but yeah, are you on schedule for HR, the next HR meeting?
No.
Which should be the 25th, so a week from tomorrow. Yeah.
I just, I assume since it segued into wages of the last meeting, that we would be able to talk about it to some degree. So how were we able to waiver from the last meeting?
I don't know that it was as much of a discussion as it was, my recollection was, Bill was just not in favor of getting you cars, he'd just rather get you wages. So I think that was just a personal preference.
It's not that we're wavering, Sheriff.
Yeah.
I think, it's not that we're wavering. I think Bill, in his argument with regard to the cars, and he might want to add to this, he was saying that he would rather use the money for wages rather than vehicles, but we can get into that.
Correct. Okay. So that's where we're at.
Okay.
So I've spent a lot of time in the last, I don't know, it's almost probably been three weeks now, looking at this. And we did 25 cars three years ago. I had in my mind that we were going to potentially do 25 cars for this next budget season. So I'm comfortable with going ahead with 25 cars, 1.9 million. That gives a little bit of cushion to build them out and to get them delivered. So I don't know, I mean, it's just kind of a starting point, because I haven't talked about it with, with Bill or Chris, but I'm comfortable with 25 and capping it at 1.9 million.
Source of funds?
Fund balance. Just straight fund balance.
Straight fund balance. And you know, that kind of makes sense, because when we did the 25, I think the assumption was that after three years, we'd probably be doing 25 again. It was just a question of how we were going to pay for them.
And, and we did the lease before, but the lease cost taxpayers $40,000, and I'd rather not, I'd rather save that money this time, pay for them all upfront, instead of spreading it out and banks making money.
And rates are higher now, too. Bill?
I'm not prepared at this point to go forward with approving this.
Any other thoughts?
We need to address this whole thing, wages and cars and everything else together. We can't piecemeal it. That's where we've gotten in trouble over the last few budget cycles.
Yeah, I disagree. This is a time-sensitive matter, and if we don't jump on this, we're going to be behind the eight ball in the whole situation of cars being backlogged and supply chains and all that. And so I think this is a good opportunity to get the 22 pricing instead of having to pay the 23 pricing. So I would like to go ahead with that now, fully knowing that addressing wages requires ongoing funds, and that's why we're looking at it at an HR meeting separately.
Can you just say a little bit about the fund balance?
Well, yes. So it's going to segue a little bit into our discussion about ARPA later, but because where we just left things, I think it was in March, we have about $9 million kind of slated towards the expansion of the Justice Center. And so if we take all that out of ARPA, we're going to have some funds left over in fund balance to, to address situations like this. And then we are going to, I can't tell you how much it is right now, but right, but we are on track for returning more to fund balance at the end of FY22, due to open positions, due to construction projects not being done, and some other, I don't know if Keith or Brandy want to, if you have anything different than that to add? Okay.
Okay, that's fine. The 1.9 mil, are they fully equipped?
Yes. 1.9 will get you 25 cars fully equipped with about $25,000 cushion, I think.
I'm fine.
Okay. I move, I move that we approve the ordering of 25 patrol cars not to exceed 1.9 million.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Just suggest something quickly.
Sure.
No.
I did provide the Board with some legal advice about how, how to do that. And I do recommend that the Board make a record about how, and I think you've kind of done it already, but how it would be disadvantageous to the county to not move forward with this purchase now. You've kind of alluded to it, but a statement to that effect, I think, would be helpful.
Yes. So these cars are, correct me if I'm wrong, they were, well, ordered under the, it's either state piggyback contract, or it was competitively bid is the issue. We have to make sure that these cars were competitively bid. And is that something that you can provide?
Or, or I'll just clarify, or if you, or another exception is, is that if the Board finds that it's disadvantageous to the county to pass up this deal, because it sounds like you're saying this is a good deal based on supply chain issues and pricing, if the county passes this deal up, based on the circumstances, these cars become available, that it would be disadvantageous. So if you could just sort of expand on that record a little bit, that removes it from the procurement requirements.
Yes.
Because of anticipated price increases for 23.
That's right.
Yes. And the supply chain issue. So I think the double issue coming together would make it not only impractical, but disadvantageous and even unreasonable considering our timeframe here. We wouldn't be able to go out and match this. And it was another government agency who procured this order. So, okay. So...
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah. Okay. Bill Brooks? Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion is carried.
All right. And now, update memorandum of understanding for Spokane Medical Examiner Office and the, yep, Dr. Keane.
Thank you, Commissioners Warren Keane from the Coroner's Office, for the record. Last November, we went and updated the memorandum of understanding with Spokane. Since then, all of the older individuals have left the office, and they have updated quite a bit of their handling. Their prices have gone down on the routine autopsies, but then on complicated autopsies, they've gone up, such as homicides, bullet tracks, knife, those kind of things. So they've brought that forward. They've also eliminated their antiquated computer system and are now updated to what we have, which is called the MDI Log System, which is used statewide in Idaho and is also used statewide in Washington. And so we wanted to update this for us.
Okay. And the only other significant change, I didn't go through it line by line, but the only other significant change I found is that they are saying, they changed it from five in 24 hours to just five in any single event. So that's, I think, really advantageous to our citizens here at the county.
Yes, it is very advantageous as far as a mass fatality event.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep. So...
Cool. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the update, the memorandum of understanding with the Spokane Medical Examiner Office and Spokane...
Second.
Excuse me. And our Coroner Office here in Coeur d'Alene.
Sorry.
Did you capture it?
I seconded. Okay. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right.
Thanks, Dr. Keane.
All right. Item 23, Notice of Termination of MOU for Regulatory Buoyes Hayden Lake Watershed Improvement District. And Nick Snyder, I know that this has come before us before, but we wanted to make it better available for the citizens to understand what was happening. So, Nick?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder, for the record. Yes, essentially, before you, the housekeeping item, as you've already described, the Board made a unanimous motion in a previous meeting to terminate the MOU with Hayden Lake Watershed District for maintenance of the buoys located there on Hayden Lake. And legal counsel recommended that we place aside the Montevideo CC, meaning to ensure it's cleared for the record. And essentially, Commissioners, we are terminating this MOU so the Hayden Lake Watershed District can take over the full responsibility of maintenance of those buoys. They are a pseudo-government entity, and the Idaho Department of Land agrees, and they will move forward accordingly. Commissioner Philios has already signed the termination, and we've sent that off, so this is just to ensure clarity for the record.
All right. Then I will go ahead and move that we acknowledge the notice of termination of the MOU for Regulatory Buoyes between Cootney County and Hayden Lake Watershed Improvement District. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. Advisory Board Appointment. Paul Wagner has applied for our Natural Resource Advisory Board, and they, the Board feels like it'll be a good fit. The piece that Natural Advisory Board was missing was the fire, fire resource, and Mr. Wagner has that background for forest fires, and so I recommend that we appoint Mr. Wagner.
So I'll make the motion that we appoint Paul Wagner to the Natural Resource Advisory Board, term ending December 31st of 23.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. Our next item is Eastside Fire District Annexation and Request for Annexation Various Parcels and our own Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Ferguson.
Commissioners, this is a request for annexation into the Eastside Fire District. Looks like four parcels, one owned by the Hazard Living Trust, and three separate parcels, all owned by Narnia Land Partners LLC. And the parcels are all contiguous to currently annexed property. The Eastside Fire District held a hearing, subject to publishing the notice. It did approve annexation, and it does appear that these four parcels all meet the requirements for annexation.
And if you have no questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the Eastside Fire District Annexation for the Narnia Land Partners LLC and their three parcels, and then Hazard Living Trust.
I'll second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried.
All right. Our next item is Board Approval Request for Volunteer Search and Rescue Donation Transfer of the Cootney County 2022 Quality Trailers. It's an enclosed food trailer. And is Sergeant Miller on the line?
This is Kim Riley. I don't know if Sergeant Miller was going to be available. If not, I'd be happy to take care of this.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Kim.
If the Board chooses, I believe 26 and 27 could be handled at the same time. So item number 26 is the donation agreement for the donation of the trailer described already by you from Cootney County Volunteer Search and Rescue to Cootney County Sheriff's Office. And then item number 27 is the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my only question, Kim, and I don't know if you can answer this, are there any restrictions on this donation? And is it only supposed to be used in a certain capacity, or?
Not that I'm aware of. Sergeant Miller reached out to us, just because we've kind of said that, you know, if you're receiving something, it's probably either a grant or donation. So he did reach out to us, and I know that he worked with auditor staff to get to this point. So as far as I'm aware, there is no, you know, there are no strings attached. I just wanted to donate it from VCR to Cootney County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Thank you. And Under Sheriff Nelson is here.
And for clarity purposes, it's strictly a donation to the search and volunteer program. It'll be used to, utilized to feed our personnel at scenes and other various events, so there's no legalese attached to it. It's just simply a donation from a member of the search and rescue in honor of his wife.
Thank you. All right. I'll, if you want me to...
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we approve the request for the volunteer search and rescue donation of the, transfer of the trailer, VIN 1Z9Z1EN24NP475447, and approve resolution 2022-37, which memorializes such transfer.
I'll second.
Bill Brooks?
Hi.
Chair Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion's carried.
All right, and that is our regular action item list, and now we'll go on to our first item for discussion, and then our pending list. So, ARPA-funded projects, I was unable to be here last week in person, so I wanted to save this discussion for now. We have this beautiful, huge book presented to us by the ARPA Task Force, very thorough, I can't say that it was a riveting read, but it had all the information that we needed in it, so. I guess, there's several ways that I thought of handling this, and so I want to ask you and Bill on how you guys want to go. We can just have a meeting, accept it as a whole, as presented, we can discuss each item, we can meet weekly to discuss items, then what we also need to take into consideration is the additional 4.8 million and the additional ask that we got, but the additional ask we got won't need to be addressed until after May 24th, so. I don't know how, I, I think I prefer to accept it as a whole, but I am absolutely prepared to schedule meetings to discuss each item individually.
Okay, so, Bill, do you want to share your thoughts?
Yeah, I, this whole ARPA thing, I know we've got almost 100 different requests, and they've been pouring in since the day we announced we had ARPA money available, and I think we've given unrealistically false hopes to a lot of people when we had no intention whatsoever of granting any of their, their requests, so I'm, I want to take each one of these things individually.
So if I understand you correctly, you want to go through the first $27 million and take each of those individually?
Well, every, I, yeah, everything, I think everybody who's made a request is entitled to an answer as to what we've done with the money and why, and why they got it or why they didn't.
That's what this book is. Yep, so that's exactly what's contained in this book, and the book is on our website for all of the requesters to examine.
You know, realizing that we had $90 million of requests.
Yes, I know.
Well, obviously, everybody's going to get a response, it might, in most cases, not going to be the one they want. But I think, from my perspective, the ARPA Task Force has gone through painstakingly, considering the legal ramifications, if any, the nature of the requests, their compatibility with the purpose of the ARPA funds, so I don't have an issue accepting the first $27 million. I think we need, we, we might need meetings, will need meetings.
Yep.
To consider the balance, but as far as this first 27 mil, I'm fine with it as presented by the ARPA Task Force.
Okay, so what we'll need to do is schedule a separate meeting, and then we can make a motion on that, and the other 4.8 million does not need to be decided until 24, 2024. So, I will work with Jonathan, and we'll get some advertisement out, and make sure that the public is well aware of, of what's coming forward.
Okay.
And that they can review that, so.
Yeah, because this is discussion, there's no vote today.
Correct, exactly. All right, now our status pending list, and next, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Next week, we'll be opening bids for the Justice Center expansion for, RFQs for the Construction Manager General Contractor, CMGC. That's all there, and PAC Airport Lease?
That's all taken care of.
So it's signed?
Yes, all done, they've accepted it, sent it over to Stephen, Stephen has not forwarded that to me yet, but they've accepted it, and Stephen has passed on it, so.
Okay, so I assume it'll just come before us at a regular scheduled business meeting, then? Okay, Stephen's not?
I assume it will.
Yep, okay, great.
And?
And then we have put on hold our financial snapshots until after the budget, so I can actually just hide that segment until probably September, if that would help the auditors team get, get up to date on some of their more pressing matters. So I see a couple people in the audience, is there public comment? No? Okay, anybody online, Jonathan? No. All right, thank you, everyone, it is 2:35, and this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, thanks a lot.